Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for pledge allegiance. I ask you to remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for Andy Sukamoto, who died suddenly this past Friday night. As you know, Andy is the husband of two-term councilwoman Jamie Sukamoto and father of Amanda and Andrew. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family at this very difficult time. Moment of silence. The services, full details have not been announced, but the wake is, will be Thursday, and funeral on Friday. We'll share more details as we have it. Thank you. I have a motion for the executive minutes of February 27th. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion for the regular minutes of February 27th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, all. Our dedicated followers who didn't let the lizard warning that went into effect already, I believe, even though we're hours away from the true storm. But this is, as each hour has gone, the report and certainty has gone up, and I just heard, I think, that his totals, snow totals may have even been increased. So we are in for quite a next 24 to 36 hours. But I'm sure Bob will have more to report on. But as always, our borough is ready to handle the emergency. But for those involved, not emergency, the borough offices will be closed tomorrow, and we'll have a delayed opening on Wednesday, as people will probably be digging out. Garbage and recycling collection for tomorrow's been canceled, and will be done on Thursday. Yard race has been canceled for the week, and will restart next Monday. The library is closed tomorrow, and will reopen Wednesday at noon. And the DPW, electric utility, and all public safety employees are prepared for the storm and ready to go out there. And for all the public, please make sure your fire hydrants and sidewalks are clear within 24 hours after the snow stopped. And keep your friends and neighbors in mind, especially seniors that may not be able to clear themselves out, and do some wellness checks, and report anything that you have concern. And of course, as they always say, except for essential people, stay off the road, and you are no more essential than you are to your family. So please, take it easy out there. And for those that'll be watching this meeting after you've already dug out, we made it through another one. A couple other things, speaking of the weather, I represented Madison in the Morris Town Parade, Morris County Parade in Morris Town this past Saturday, and it was cold. And I think, I don't know whether Geraldine was able to get started, but the cold weather got to Geraldine, and they were trying to jumpstart it when I left Geraldine was going to bring up the rear of the parade. So I don't know, but they were, they were ready to represent Madison proudly. This past Friday, the Chamber of Commerce had annual awards lunch, and the keynote speaker was Jay Batna, Senior Vice President with Allergan. And his, major part of his topic was how Allergan ended up in Madison. And he had a checklist, and the finalist towns that were listed, which included Madison, Summit, Newark, and Jersey City. And Madison was the only one with checks in every box, and some of the areas that were important, timing and delivery risk. You know, Allergan needed this option at a certain time, and Madison not only could deliver on that timing, but made, very comfortable that they were not taking a risk by coming to Madison. The size and image of security that Madison gave that right image they were looking for. Transportation alternatives that, you know, we were up against Newark and Jersey City, which gives certainly fine public transportation, but for those driving, a weak option. And here in Madison, we had both, the option to drive and public transportation. A vibrant downtown, and yes, our check was not as bright as the Jersey City one was for a vibrant downtown, or Newark's, or even Summit, that had a little bit brighter than ours, but we got a check for our great downtown. And we had a check for government incentives, and primarily, that's what New Jersey was offering. But the Borough of Madison offers incentives in a different way, and that's how positively we work with potential corporations moving to our town. So it was a great thing to be recognized for all the work, and I will thank all the borough officials for the support to make sure Allergan picked Madison as their home. Employees of the Month for March are Edna Irelly Byrne and Helen Corlett of the Madison Senior Center for their commitment and professionalism in sponsoring two TCAP days at the Senior Center, in which time chemo caps were made for distribution to patients at the Carol Simon Center. And as I mentioned, Edna, she has announced her retirement. So after serving and running great programs in the Senior Center for so many years, Edna Irelly Byrne will be retiring in May. So if you see her, please congratulate her and thank her for all her years of service to the Borough of Madison. Library announcements, the library trustees. Speaking of retirement, unanimously approved the appointment of Marilyn Favreau as the new director of the Madison Public Library. She will start working at the library on a part-time basis on Monday, April 17th, to overlap with Nancy Damcheck, the current director. And Marilyn will assume her full-time position on May 1st. And if you do see her, she goes by Lynn. Shorten it there, and we look forward to her coming on. She was the director of the Mountainside Public Library, and her appointment was a result of a long, comprehensive search undertaken by the trustees committee and the Board of Trustees. I sat in on the interviews as a member of the Board of Trustees. Also, last Saturday, the library's refurbished picture book room was dedicated, and with recognition given to the generous donors, the Molstad family, the Friends of the Library, and the Madison Public Library, Inc. And a reminder, for those who love the library and the friends, that this March 25th, from 5:30 to 7:30, the library is having their annual gala. And the guest of honor is Nancy Damcheck, to recognize her many years of service to the library. Got a few proclamations. I don't think anyone is here to accept any of these proclamations, so I will do a few comments. If I can find my briefie. National Poison Prevention Week, March 19th to 25th. Couple of key things to keep in mind related to poison awareness is, obviously, poisoning, every poisoning is preventable, and unintentional poisoning is the leading cause of unintentional injury death in New Jersey. And majority of poisonings involve children under five years of age and younger, and most of deaths occur with adults between 20 and 59. And whereas drug overdose deaths include prescription pain medicine, and heroin remain at epidemic proportions for both New Jersey and the United States, and it is a majority, drug overdoses are, include and involve an opiate. And where, if you need support, please keep this number not only at hand, but programmed into your cellphone, 800-222-1222, which is Poison Help Hotline. And they are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and provide multilingual support. So now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim the week of March 19th to 25th as National Poison Prevention Week in New Jersey, and encourage all citizens to pledge their commitment to ensure the safety of themselves, their families, and the community. And March is Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. It's, colorectal cancer is the third most commonly diagnosed cancer, and the second most common cause of cancer deaths for men and women in the United States and New Jersey. Affects men and women equally, and is estimated there will be over 140,000 new cases, with a death rate of over 50,000. Every three minutes, someone is diagnosed with colorectal cancer, and every 10 minutes, someone dies from colorectal cancer. Only 39% of colorectal patients have their cancers detected at early stage, and the survival rate for individuals having caught at early stages is 90%. And if the majority of people in the United States ages 50 and over were screened regularly for colorectal cancer, the death rate for this disease would plummet by over 70%. So now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim the month of March 2017 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to get regular screenings, screenings to help save lives. And a very well-timed proclamation to the American Red Cross, as we're on the eve of a weather event. The Red Cross, we know, is always ready to provide support after a, as people recover from weather, and probably even more importantly for Madison, is with the fire in downtown, where 26 people were, lost their homes, the Red Cross was there to provide temporary housing. And so the Red Cross is so very important, and it's also for everything else they do around blood drives, and providing over 40% of the nation's blood supply, providing safety training, and serving around the state, country, and around the world. So now, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim March 2017 as American Red Cross Month, and encourage all residents to support this organization and its humanitarian mission. And now, it works for committees while I get a drink of water. Public Works in Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. DPW, of course, is in the midst of really getting ready for tomorrow. But in the last couple of weeks, our new department person has been meeting with Shade Tree and the Friends of Shade Tree for learning about the various up-and-coming projects. They've also installed all the banners in the art poles downtown, the yellow ones that you see. Last Friday, snowstorm went pretty well, and there were no complaints, from what I understand, so that was pretty good. They're installing new signs as they go around, especially around the school parking areas. There's one on DeHart and Cedar Street, and the police department alerts them to, to that kind of work. They're already started to work on the baseball and softball fields, which I'm sure we're not going to be able to see for a couple of days. But, and they've, he has also met with soccer and Little League to outline the field priorities, and to figure out what recreation, what is exactly needed. All the sewer stations are running, and there's no mechanical issues. There was a broken sewer line at DPW that was taken care of. In preparation for the paving that I guess is going to be put off for a little while, they cleaned all the storm inlets. And also, there is, you may see a couple of very large trucks from National Water, is that what it is, National Water? They're working with a camera crew on sewer lines in various areas of the borough. And I had the pleasure of actually going in and watching the camera. They came down my street, and they cleaned out the sewer line, and then they, they put in a camera that goes into the laterals and whatever. It's pretty interesting. And so they're, they're going to be continuing with that, because it's very important for the North, the North Street Pump Station. Fleet repair, they're always busy. They, they fix fire apparatus. All the lawn mowers were serviced, you know, so they're ready. The gunbuster is ready for downtown. They serviced all the snow plows and the salters, and, you know, they continue with regular vehicle service. From the construction office, Russ Brown has let us know that they're really actually wrapping up the St. Vincent's Church project, which is going to be really great. The church looks beautiful. They're going to issue a CVO later this week. I think they anticipate, like, right after Easter, of having their, their grand opening. The work at KRE and Markville and Allergan are beginning to ramp up, along with the many residential projects in both Madison and Chatham. All in all, we're starting off to have a very strong year in construction. So some of the data that he has given us is that there is 33% increase in permits issued, updates issued. We're a little bit lower. Inspections performed were 19% increase. So we are really at, construction fees collected is at a 599% increase year-to-date. So it's a very hard-working department. From engineering, there's site remediation that needs to be done in the rear of Hartley Dodge, and that was awarded to Enterprise Network, and that's scheduled for the first pre-construction meeting on March 20th. The overhaul, overall schedule of work was coordinated with Roy Redman, and confirmed a project will start later this month, and it'll last probably about six months. An interesting thing, and we have this on one of our resolutions tonight, a set of drawings for Hartley Dodge Memorial was received by the borough staff, and that's going to be submitted to the county of Morris Historic Preservation Trust on Friday, March 31st, as part of the grant application process for the plaza improvements. This, the set of drawings will also be used in the grant reimbursement process with the New Jersey Historic Trust, if the grant agreement is signed. So they've been attending many meetings to learn how to do those, to set up those grants. There was asbestos sampling in the east wing, wing of this building, and that's been completed, and actually, the cost estimates for the abatement have been reduced as a result. 2017 road construction plans and specifications were advertised in February, and bids received March, March 16th, for contract awards proposed on the 27th, and the work completed during the summer months. The 2017 pavement maintenance program was already awarded for mill and overlay, so that'll be done. Central Avenue additional field survey is underway for the extended water main replacement project. Plans and specifications will be finalized next month, next month, once the survey are completed. The Prospect Street reconstruction has been completed, and the initial grant reimbursement request of $129,375 has been received. The final reimbursement payment of $43,125 will be applied for upon completion of all the punchlet items, and final invoice from Sinfeli Construction. This goes on and on. Sanitary sewers, there's a lot of pre-construction. We have National Water Main Cleaning Company that's been out there working, so if you see, if you see them, that's what they're doing, is they're cleaning the sewer line, and then looking at, cammering to make sure that everything is okay. Let me see, there was Water Department. Design work for Well A renovation has been initiated, and draft plans have been received for review from Mott McDonnell. Well A and B are both scheduled for improvements over the next two years. The Link Company has provided a report on the redevelopment work on Well D, and is recommending certain additional activities prior to reassembling the well. There's a lot of work going on with all the wells, to make sure that they're all in good shape. And I could go on and on, but I think that that's enough.
It was a blizzard.
Give it to Liz to put in the.
There's a blizzard coming.
Thank you very much. And public safety and OEM, Mr. Landrigan.
It's a hard act to follow, but I'll give my best shot.
Okay, from the Fire Department. The Fire Department is set up and ready for tomorrow's anticipated major snowstorm event. Manpower and equipment are ready to respond if needed during the snowstorm. Residents are asked to help the Fire Department. If you have a fire hydrant on your, on or near your property, please do not pile or plow snow on it. We also ask that, once the storm is over, you'll make it accessible, make the hydrant accessible from the street by clearing the snow three feet around the hydrant. Residents are asked if they have an appliance that has an exhaust discharge pipe on their home that discharges below two feet from the ground, to be sure it remains clear of snow once it arrives. Not clearing the snow could result in a buildup of CO in the home that could poison you and your family. One volunteer firefighter started firefighter-one training. One lieutenant started a fire officer class. One lieutenant started a fire instructor level-one class. These classes are all at the Morris County Fire Academy. On Saturday, February 25th, six firefighters, one career, five volunteers, attended a four-hour class in Neptune City entitled Man Versus Machine Rescue. This program provided responders with the knowledge to help manage the incidents involving extrication of patients from various types of machinery. And finally, one volunteer firefighter resigned on March 8th, as he's moving to Butler. Now from OEM, as you all know, there's a major storm coming. Right now, it's anticipated to accumulate 18 to 24 inches. The worst of the storm is supposed to start at 10 o'clock tonight and go through early afternoon tomorrow, they're talking 2 or 3 o'clock. Winds are supposed to hit about 40 miles an hour, gusts up to 40 miles an hour, and snow could actually pile up about four inches an hour. The state of New Jersey declared a state of emergency. I'll get more information on that, because there are different types of states of emergency. What we're doing in Madison is this, I'm asking all residents to shelter in home, meaning don't go out if you don't have to during the storm. It's going to be dangerous. If there is a large-scale power outage, like we had during Hurricane Sandy, we will open up the ambulance car as a shelter. Either a warming versus a warming station, and depending on how quickly the power comes back on, then if need be, it will be opened as a shelter. And I'll, I guess, I'll send out a nixle message in that regard. And that's about it. I mean, right now, the whole key is people stay home, stay safe. The ambulance car is going to have additional crews available tomorrow, should they be needed. And the Fire Department will be responding with the squad to help dig a path to the home if need be. Because a lot of times during these storms, the ambulance will get there, there's no way to get in the house with the snow piled up, so the Fire Department historically shovels the path for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're introducing the municipal budget. That process started six months ago, with the administration meeting with department heads to discuss their budgets over the summer. The council started reviewing the budget information in October, and the council has reviewed the budget about eight different public meetings, so it's been a very transparent process. After the vote this evening, the official budget document will be sent to Trenton, as required by state statute. It will also be available online, and a copy will be available at the Madison Public Library and the Morris County Library. So residents are encouraged to review it and all the documentation presented to council during the budget process. That information can be found on Rosnet on the annual budget process. As required by state law, the budget will be available for review for a minimum of 28 days before it will come back to the council for a final vote. The budget hearing and vote for adoption are tentatively scheduled for the council meeting of Wednesday, April 12th. In addition to the state budget document, the Finance Department has created a simple, one-page municipal budget summary, as well as the state's new user-friendly budget, which doesn't look user-friendly at all. All three documents contain the same information, they're just presented in a different way. In summary, this is, it really is, and thank you to Jim Burnett and our administrator, Ray Cody, it is a good news budget, because we have $1.5 million in electric dividend that will be distributed to all electric customers over the coming year, expanded reliance on predictable revenues, and a significant reduction in the use of utility surplus to fund operations, an overall budget increase of less than 2%, a modest 2% increase in property taxes for existing homes in town, over $7 million in capital funding, and no cut in any of our municipal services. So I want to thank them again, and thank the council for their support.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Okowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Department has had another busy week. They completed removal of overhead cables, other equipment and poles at the KRE site. Obviously, if you've gone by, you know it's a very active place, and our, our Electric Department has certainly been there. They've also continued the repair of poles and cables on Greenwood Avenue that were damaged during recent storms. That was going back about five weeks now, I guess. Let's hope that I don't have something like that to say about another street next week, or our next meeting. And the other, the other thing worth mentioning is they've been installing video surveillance equipment at our substations. It's something that the council had approved, and it's now ongoing. The rest of what they did is more or less usual, maintenance, et cetera. Part of the water report was already made. I'll give you, I'll give you the other remaining piece. The Water Department was also at the KRE. There were some repairs needed, so they ended up having to shut down the water, did the repairs, and started it up again. They've also done some consulting on the water service layout at St. Vincent the Martyr Church, and they're starting the paint prep at Well C, another thing we talked about here, and it's now starting up. And the last thing to mention, and I'll add a personal note on this, emergency generators at the well were inspected, and good to say, all ran well. The piece I wanted to add was, if you happen to have a home generator, and it kicks in tomorrow, don't forget to clean the snow away from the vents, or else you won't have a generator for very long. All right, just a little public service announcement.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Health Department staff has been working with the Bagel Chateau to expedite their reopening after the fire in their building, and this was accomplished early last week. The Health Department's also been working on preparing the annual New Jersey State Department of Health local health reports for Madison and contracting communities. This report, through the Hippocrates application, helps capture, manage, display, and disseminate health information. By integrating real-time information, Hippocrates supports users in preparing for, responding to, and recovering from natural and man-made health threats and emergencies. And finally, Madison has a new contract with Cranford to provide health services to that community. Our staff have been working with the township to ensure we are ready to provide all the necessary services as agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any affairs, Ms. Byrne.
From the Senior Center, thanks to the Rada Grant, the Senior Center will be rolling out their Go Daddy, Go Go, Go Go Grandparent, thank you, Go Go Grandparent, transportation system, which will be, oh, yeah, Go Daddy's the computer people, which will be available to senior citizens to give them rides within a 15-mile radius of Madison. This will supplement the van that we have, which is also going to be extending its hours to 4:30. The Downtown Development Commission, and the Chamber of Commerce, and the Rotary Club are planning on hosting the Taste of Madison this, a week from tonight, at the Park Avenue Club. If you haven't gotten your tickets, you can get them on the, on the Taste of Madison website. It's a lot of fun, a lot of good food, a lot of good wine, a lot of good people, so I encourage everyone to go. The Rotary is also having their End Hunger Program next Saturday at Drew University. They are hoping to pack over 100,000 meals for different food banks and soup kitchens in the area. If you're interested in volunteering, you can go to the Rotary website and sign up. And then finally, on Saturday, at Short Stories Book Hub, we had the opening of Turn the Town Yellow, which focuses on mental health issues. As many of you know, mental health issues are very personal to me. You can see the artwork in various businesses downtown. There will be events going through the end of April. April is National Mental Health Month, and we encourage everyone to wear yellow on Monday, March 20th, which is National Happiness Day.
Thank you. All right, now we go on to introduction of the 2017 budget and tax. All right, now we go on to introduction of the two thousand seventeen budget and tax resolution, uh, ninety-four, twenty seventeen. I call up ordinance eleven, twenty seventeen for first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by the title.
Calendar year two thousand seventeen ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Mayor, I move ordinance eleven dash twenty seventeen.
I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call of vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
All right, the budget introduction. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Upon introduction and adoption, the two thousand and seventeen budget and tax resolution will be published in summary in the Madison Eagle on March twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, with a public hearing date set for Wednesday, April the twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, at eight PM in the council chambers of the Hartley-Dodge Memorial, at which time and place all interested individuals will have an opportunity to be heard, and there will be consideration for final adoption. A copy of the budget as introduced will be filed with the Madison Public Library and the Morris County Library for public review.
I have a motion for resolution ninety-four dash two thousand and seventeen, a resolution of Borough of Madison adopting the two thousand and seventeen budget and tax resolution.
Mayor, I move resolution ninety-four dash twenty seventeen.
I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call of vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Just to get a reminder for the public that, uh, because of Passover, it is, uh, Wednesday, April twelfth, for the, uh, hearing. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
And now we're on a first of two discussion invitations for discussion from the public. This one is limited to items on the agenda discussion or resolutions that are listed. Uh, the agenda discussions include grant application for Hartley-Dodge entry and plaza restoration, and also residential water rate minimum quarterly charge amendment, and you can also comment on any of the resolutions. If you are commenting on any of those items, please step, step to the lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and then state the topic that you are speaking on, and then try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment based on those guidelines. Seeing none, we close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussions. The two thousand and seventeen construction grant application.
Yeah, I guess it's pretty easy. Um, we would like to, uh, obtain a grant from the Morris County Historic Trust Fund, so we are applying. We need a resolution of council support, and that's what I'm asking for, for tonight.
Any questions on that? All right, and that is, um, resolution ninety-nine on the consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Residential water rate minimum quarterly charge amendment.
Mayor, I can handle that. This is a, our, our current water structure provides a minimum quarterly charge based on the size of your water meter, and in some cases, the minimum charge exceeds significantly the actual water usage by the resident. So the Finance Department, together with the Utility Collector, reviewed that and feel that it's something that we should address. So this ordinance basically provides a mechanism that upon review of the twenty, for example, the twenty-sixteen bills for all residential water meters, we can determine whether the usage was less than the minimum charge or it exceeded. If it exceeded, there's no change. If it was, the usage was less than the minimum charge, the rate, prospectively for two thousand and seventeen, would be adjusted to the next lower meter size level, which would reduce their minimum quarterly charge, or their usage, whichever is the greater amount, and we think this is a fair and equitable thing to do for our residents who are being paid, who are being charged for water that they're not using based on the size of their meter.
And this puts it kind of more in line with the way we do electric, is, which is more based on demand and/or, uh, total usage.
Correct.
And the other difference is, um, on our high-end users for electric, they have their meter on the primary side before transformer, and there's no, no equivalent to that on a, in the water, that it's, we don't transform water into anything different. So, any other comments or?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, so this is ordinance twelve, which is listed for introduction. We now move on to ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Okay, the ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on Monday, February the twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. It was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting seen.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance nine, two thousand and seventeen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating four hundred and forty thousand dollars from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for purchase of two double bucket trucks.
I open the hearing for ordinance nine. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance nine dash twenty seventeen.
I second.
Any council discussion? Roll call of vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance nine dash two thousand and seventeen adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance ten, two thousand and seventeen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating two hundred thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of portable police radios.
I open the hearing for ordinance ten. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance ten dash two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call of vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance ten dash two thousand and seventeen adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there in newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we are on to the second of, uh, two invitations for discussion. This is when you may comment on, on anything, so please, if you do want to, come up to the lectern, state your name, your address, write the same, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we go to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for her, for first reading has a hearing date set for March the twenty-seventh, uh, two thousand and seventeen. It was published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance twelve, two thousand and seventeen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter one ninety of the Borough Code entitled Water to Change the Billing Method for Residential Water Meters.
Mayor, I move, uh, ordinance twelve dash twenty seventeen.
I second.
Any further council discussion? Roll call of vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Now we move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is ordered by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move, uh, resolutions ninety-five dash twenty seventeen to R. one oh nine dash twenty seventeen.
I second.
Any discussion or any of that need to be pulled? Roll call of vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. The approval of vouchers.
Vouchers, the current fund, four hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars seventy-five cents. General capital fund, twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars eighty cents. Electric operating fund, a hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars ninety-one cents. The electric capital fund, nine thousand two hundred dollars. Water operating fund, forty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars sixty-four cents. Water capital fund, twenty-five thousand one hundred dollars. The trust, sixteen thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars eighty-nine cents. The total is seven hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call of vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
The only unfinished business is, let's be careful for the next forty-eight hours out there.
Mayor, I move we close.
Mayor, you should always have meetings under the, uh...
Snowstorm.
I just sent you the link to an article. Where are we? That's great.